All right. Oh, it is seven o'clock.
Six fifty-nine.
Very close.
Six fifty-nine? Okay, well, close. Close enough. So, welcome, everybody. Just a quick reminder, if you have cellphones with you, please put them on airplane mode or silent mode so that they do not disrupt our meeting this evening. And glad to see so many of you here. I can't imagine why all of you are here, but just kidding. Thank you all for coming. First order of business, I'd like to ask that you join me in pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's see if I can do that. You turn it on. Is that the right color? There you go. All right, we have to turn our sign on. So with that, I'm going to start out with introductions this evening. I'm Lisa Whelan, I'm the mayor, and to my left are council members Kathleen Refkin and Peter Vickery. We have a couple council members absent this evening, McGregor and then Claudia Lacy. And then we have on the end, we have our city engineer Allison Falsky with WSB. And then we also have our director of public works, Gary Peters. And we have our city clerk, or is she absent this evening?
She's absent.
She's absent. I see that. But I see that you're not in your seat either, so I was confused. There you go. And then Ally Paul Fuss, who is also here, she's going to take some pictures. And then we have Brian Grimm, our finance director, and David Abel, our community development director. And then we have our city attorney Sarah Sin Sala with Kennedy and Graven. And then, of course, most importantly, of course, this evening, we have our chief of police Paul Falls with us. So with that, I'm going to make one slight adjustment to our agenda. We have Senator Morrison here this evening, and so under special presentations, she'll be addressing the council with some information. And thank you for coming. And we also have, of course, prior to that, we're going to be swearing in our newest police officer. So with that, is there approval of the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Vickery. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those -- motion passes three oh. So, we're going to do the swearing in first, and Ms. Paul, I think you'll be giving a little background.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. It's always an honor and a privilege to swear in new staff. And, well, we don't want to lose staff, so we have to do this too often. It's an honor to swear in new staff. So Officer Anderson, or Tyler Anderson, is actually, was our fifteenth officer. So for the first time in our history, we actually made it to number fifteen. As you're familiar, that was in addition to our staff. As we continue to grow, we need to keep up with that. And so Tyler was our fifteenth officer. So with that, I'll just read a little bit about Officer Anderson, and then we'll go ahead and do the swearing in. Officer Tyler Anderson began employment with the city of Minnetrista on January 2nd, 2024. Officer Anderson has several years of prior law enforcement experience. Officer Anderson worked as a dispatcher and jailer for the Lake County Sheriff's Office from April 2015 to November of 2015. Officer Anderson worked as a police officer in the Two Harbors Police Department from January 2016 until November of 2021. Officer Anderson worked for the St. Louis County Sheriff's Office as a patrol deputy from November 2021 till joining our team in January. Officer Anderson graduated from Vermillion Community College with an associate's degree in law enforcement. Officer Anderson is currently completing his field training, and he will be assigned to a patrol shift in the very near future. So, as I said, it's an honor to have Officer Anderson with us. It's not too often that we get an officer with such experience. So that's really important. I think he's been a great fit so far, and we look forward to working with him. His field training, typical field training can be anywhere from twelve to sixteen weeks, and so his is drastically reduced due to his prior experience. So he'll be on the road probably in just a few shifts from tonight. So, very happy about that. So, we are very excited to have Officer Anderson on our team. And that said, at this time, I'd like to invite Mayor Whelan, Lieutenant Squires, and Officer Anderson up to the podium.
Right, so I'm going to read this, and then you can just repeat after me.
Okay.
This is the Minnetrista Public Safety Department Oath of Honor. And on my honor--
On my honor--
--as a member of the Minnetrista Public Safety Department--
As a member of the Minnetrista Public Safety Department--
--I will uphold the mission of the department--
I will uphold the mission of the department--
--by fighting crime and promoting safety--
By fighting crime and promoting safety--
--I will uphold my badge--
So welcome, Senator Morrison.
I will uphold my badge--
--my integrity--
Thank you, good evening.
My integrity--
--my character--
My character--
--and the public trust--
That was kind of cool to be here for that.
And the public trust.
I will uphold the Constitution of the United States of America--
I love it. Congratulations.
I will uphold the Constitution of the United States of America--
Thank you for allowing me to address the council tonight.
--the laws of the state of Minnesota--
I am Kelly Morrison, I represent Senate District 45 in the Minnesota Senate, which,
The laws of the state of Minnesota--
--the values of this community--
if you're not aware, Senate District 45 is from 169 all the way up to county line in
The values of this community--
--and the policies of our department--
Minnetrista. It's every community that touches Lake Minnetaka except Victoria.
And the policies of our department--
--so help me God--
So help me God.
So if it's okay, I'd like to just briefly share some of what I worked on this session,
And welcome aboard. Congratulations.
tell you what my goals are for the coming session, and then I'd love to hear from you about Minnetrista's priorities, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any. So just for your information, I serve on four committees: Health and Human Services, Transportation, Environment, Climate, and Legacy, and then State and Local Government and Veterans, and I also serve as an Assistant Majority Leader. I'm also serving on the newly formed Task Force on Aging, the Rare Disease Advisory Council, the Opioid Epidemic Response Advisory Council, and also the Task Force on Psychedelic Medicine, which is kind of an interesting separate conversation. One of my priorities going into the session last year was to, you know, when I think about the challenges that Minnesota faces, I tend to put them into three buckets: workforce, disparities, and water. We have workforce shortages in every sector of society, so we need to be crafting policy that encourages our young people to stay in Minnesota and also entices people to move here, I think. Racial disparities, we have some of the worst in the country, and our young people are disproportionately people of color, so we've got to change that trajectory. It's about the future of our state. Water, here we are in Minnesota, sitting on this wealth of fresh water, and I think sometimes we take it for granted in Minnesota that we're fine on water, we've got a lot of it, right? But in the era of accelerating climate change and increasing water scarcity, I think it's our obligation to be careful stewards of our water. So those are big, complex challenges that hit on a lot of policy issues, but they're front of my, for me, when I approached my work at the legislature. This past session, I carried more than a hundred bills, more than sixty of them became law this year, and many fit into those categories that I just described. I'm especially proud of a bill to create a plan to ensure that Minnesota has adequate clean water for the next fifty years: the Reproductive Freedom Defense Act, which protects patients and providers from restrictive reproductive health care laws in other states; a ban on the nonessential use of PFOS for other chemicals; naloxone or Narcan in our schools, so there will be no overdoses on school grounds; and the Prescription Drug Affordability Board, which will help people access the medicine they need and decrease the burden of high-cost drugs on our health care system. I also carried and passed a Highway Seven safety study to create a plan to address the safety issues that we're seeing along the entire Highway Seven corridor. Also relevant locally, my voter education bill was successfully passed, which will hopefully make our lakes safer and protect them from erosion and the spread of aquatic invasive species. I also secured funding for the Minnesota Aquatic Invasive Species Research Center, now it's MACERC, which is doing nation-leading research on AIS prevention and treatment. Significant increase in school funding was passed, including for Minnetaka, Orinown, West Tonka schools. And then part of the final package also included additional public safety funding for every community in our Senate district, including Minnetrista, which I believe got $376,000, actually, $32,000. So the second year of the biennium is traditionally a bonding and policy year, so top priority of mine in this coming session, which starts a week from today, will be to craft a bonding bill to help address the infrastructure needs across the state, including the one that I know you all made here in Minnetrista. Republicans and Democrats have to come together to pass a bonding bill, so it will be important for the House and Senate to work together to get that done. I'm also working on a reform of the prior authorization process so that people needing cancer care, outpatient mental health care, and substance use disorder treatment don't experience dangerous delays in their care. I'm also working on legislation to try to ease the discharge crisis that's straining patients and our hospital system. We do have one challenge in the Senate caucus, our majority leader just had to step away. You may have seen in the news, Carrie Dietzick was diagnosed with ovarian cancer last year, was a remarkable leader in the Senate, but she has made the decision that she needs to step away. So we'll be picking a new majority leader this week, so there's some uncertainty in our caucus this week. But with that, I will stop. I'd love to hear from you all about what you're thinking about for Minnetrista, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have. Thanks for having me.
Thank you. I'll start out just real quick. Of course, the bonding dollars are high priority for you, as you know, and just so our residents know, we are seeking about $18 million for not just roads, but that's not on our docket, but for water infrastructure in order to be able to deliver healthy, safe drinking water to our residents. So appreciate your help so far, and hopefully you can continue that, and as you were able to secure funding for other sources last year, we hope that you will be able to secure some funding for us. Having said that, I know that the governor has only proposed about $40 million for cities and for our needs statewide. Do you foresee the Senate and the House coming together and maybe proposing a larger amount?
Oh, yeah, I think so. I assume that was the governor's negotiating stance. Obviously, there are infrastructure projects across the state that have their needs in every community, regardless of political affiliation, so there's a lot of incentive for legislators across the state to get projects done for their communities. I personally prioritize water infrastructure above all others because we all need water, and so Minnetrista is a big priority for me this year.
Okay. And then you also talked about workforce, and there's a shortage, and we know that. And obviously, here at the city, we know that there's a shortage of qualified police officers out there, and it just seems like people are kind of stealing from one department to from the other. But what we really need is some policies or something in place that will help incentivize young people to enter law enforcement and also maybe even money for college and training of those individuals, because I think that might be helpful. And we, you know, going down, if you look in the future, I see this becoming an even bigger problem. So, and then the other thing that we really need to take another look at is the SRO issue. So definitely, that should be reopened and re-looked at because that created a lot of problems for a lot of communities, including ours. So I would hope that that could be reopened and rethought about. And then the only other thing I'm going to say real quick, and I'll open it up to the rest of the council, is, you know, the Met Council, I know that there's some talk, and I know that they finished their meeting today or yesterday, but, and their proposal, I haven't seen it yet, but I think it would be a mistake to say that only city elected officials can serve on the Met Council, just because I know how much time it takes for elected officials to spend time in their own cities, let alone then to have to spend an equal or even more time on the Met Council. So maybe there's some kind of a hybrid involved in that, and I don't like the proposed state flag. That's it.
I appreciate that perspective. Thank you. And thank you, I should have mentioned the SRO issue, that is, there's a commitment to address that, I think, first thing in the session, and there's a group of legislators in law enforcement that are working on clarifying that and resolving that issue.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. I don't know how much sway or influence you have over the flag, but I--
I run right down. Mayor Whelan doesn't like the flag.
Okay. Anybody else?
Well, I'd like to thank you for your work on the Highway Seven corridor. Of course, we just had two fatalities there that, you know, drove home how important this is. Going forward, what else can you do to kind of help us, you know, move along that safety corridor?
Well, we do have a bill to provide funding to support a Highway Seven coalition. I know you've kind of started to make progress, but having some funding to support that work is important as well. And then when we see what the recommendations are from that study, I suspect that will inform future legislation for making that safer for communities all along the corridor. We've seen tragedies and a lot of illnesses. It's very frightening.
And I know that our representative, Andrew Myers, supports that as well, so it's good to have people in both House and Senate, as well as on both sides of the aisle, supporting that. Thanks for mentioning that. And yeah, we've just had one meeting so far, but I suspect we'll have more in the very near future, so that would be greatly appreciated. So, okay.
What are your plans to lower taxes in Minnesota?
Well, this isn't a taxes year. That'll be, you know, the budget is set in the first year of the biennium, and there were actually historic tax breaks in this last year.
There were also increases?
Particularly seniors and veterans saw--
But there's still the social security tax, and you raised other taxes.
Most seniors saw a decrease or a removal of state taxes on their social security benefits.
How do you define most?
Seventy-five percent.
You've confirmed that?
Sorry?
You've confirmed that stat?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm happy to get those numbers if you'd like.
How come you raised other taxes when we had a surplus?
What taxes are you referring to?
The gas tax, the seven-city metro tax, boat registration fees went up, the license fees went up. We had a surplus, and you raised taxes?
Well, I guess it depends on kind of your perspective. We have a lot of needs in our state as we emerge from COVID. The voter one, for example, hadn't been raised since, I think, about 1986. It was five dollars for three years. We've got a huge problem with the aquatic invasive species in our lakes, and it does take resources to address some of those needs.
And the surplus wasn't adequate to do that?
Well, you know, we've got lunches and breakfast for all kids in Minnesota. We have a child tax credit that's estimated to decrease child poverty in Minnesota by thirty percent. So I think that it's fair to say we did some good things this past year.
But not everyone needed free lunches for their kids.
But a lot did.
But not everyone did.
I think that the idea of all kids kind of being in the same boat at lunch is compelling, you know, that everyone's in the same boat together. And also, that creates less burden on families, too, where they don't have to pay for lunch, they don't have to, or make lunch for their kid, too. So I'm hearing you that you don't agree, and maybe we can talk more offline if you'd like, but thank you.
No, I'm just curious why you see states near us going to zero state income taxes? People are leaving the state, and we're not trying to do anything to keep people here.
We actually had a net increase this last year, we have in migration.
All right, all right.
I have one more question. You mentioned all the bills you passed. How many of those were bipartisan?
Quite a few, actually. I can get you the exact number.
You don't know off the top of your head how many?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I bet it's more than half, but I can get you that number.
Okay. All right. Hi there.
Hi.
I'm Claudia Lacy.
Nice to meet you.
Can you tell me what is happening with the assisted suicide bill?
The End of Life Options Act. It just, it had a hearing in the House, and we hope to have a hearing for it in the Senate.
Okay. I guess I have one more question. In the state of Minnesota, it's abortion is legal all the way up until birth. Can, I think seventy percent of people, even people that are very pro-choice, think up till birth is extraordinarily extreme. Can you speak to that?
I can. I'm an obstetrician and oncologist, and I think it's important to remember that ninety percent of terminations of pregnancy happen in the first trimester. When they happen later in pregnancy, they're overwhelmingly horrible tragedies, where something has gone very wrong with the pregnancy or the woman. And so to demonize families who are faced with the worst day of their lives is troubling to me. I think that we need to trust women and their health care providers to make the best decisions for them.
There are 293, I believe, that were in, passed the first trimester, and that wasn't the case. So, I mean, up till birth just is, I find it shocking, but thank you for your comments. Okay.
I'm happy to have a longer conversation with you if you'd like to.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you for having me.
All right. All right. With that, we move on to persons to be heard. We don't have anybody signed up, so we have consent agenda items A through I. Are there any you wish to remove? If not, then consent agenda items consist of approve our city council regular meeting minutes from January 22nd, 2024. B is a resolution to approve our claims. C is approve our offer of promotion to Joshua Brown from police officer to sergeant, which would be effective tomorrow, February 6th. And D is approve an offer of promotion to Carter Ostley from a public works maintenance worker to sewer operator, also effective as of tomorrow. And E is approve an interim pay for public works maintenance worker, Adam Hagoltz, effective also tomorrow, February 6th. And then F is a resolution awarding a task order, number nine, task order number nine for well number six rehab with AE2S, who is our city water infrastructure engineering firm. And G is a resolution to approve a street-side setback variance at 920 Maple Crest Drive. H is approve a resolution for a preliminary plat of Carmith Cove. And then I is a resolution to approve a six-month extension to a variance approval at 7035 Halsted Drive. Zero motion to approve consent agenda items A through I.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Vickery. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes four oh. So we have no public hearings this evening. We'll move on to our business items. Our business items, there's one business item, and it's approve our side yard setback variance at 3800 Enchanted Lane. I asked staff to put this on our business item because of the discussions that we had previously with the other ones. So I'm just going to let David give us a quick overview.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. So, the original application, as you probably read in your staff report, it started out when it was submitted with two side yard setback variances for the property at 3800 Enchanted Lane. The original request was a side yard setback from 15 feet to 10 feet, and then on the other side, it was from 15 feet to 13.8 feet. That original request has been amended, and the applicant has agreed to move and shift the proposed home to the north, which does allow for compliance on one side. So you now have 15 feet on the side where there is an existing home, there's a residence there, and by doing that, though, it does require a side yard variance from 15 feet to 8.8 feet is what you're looking at tonight, what you're reviewing, what ultimately came through discussions with the planning commission and the public hearing, what their recommendation is to you as well, as you'll see in your staff report. So the council also will recall, as the mayor said, there is some history here. There was a previous application for this property and the one next door back in August of 2023. Variances from the lake shore, street side, and side yards were reviewed back in 2023. As the council may remember, you approved a lake shore setback at 39.1 feet and a street side at 26.3 feet. Those were approved back in 2023, but the side yard variances were denied at that time. Further, you might also have noticed that, as back in 2023, when this application came in, there was a requested side yard variance request at 3790 Enchanted Lane, the property next door. As a result of the shifting and the discussions that ensued with the planning commission, the applicant did withdraw the request for that variance at 3790 and does not intend to pursue that any longer. Hence, how we kind of got to where we are this evening with only one variance being requested. There is a lakeside and street side approved by the council on that previous lot as well from before, which the applicant, you know, intends to comply with as they move forward with the house plan. So, in a nutshell, that is how we got to where we are this evening. The planning commission did hold a public hearing at their meeting last month. There was some good discussion there. I think Mayor Whelan can speak to that a little bit. She was the council liaison that attended that meeting. But as a result of the discussions there, the planning commission did recommend with a six oh vote to approve the side yard setback variances. We did prepare a resolution as such, and there's five conditions that go along with that. Can stand for any questions, and I believe the applicants are here this evening as well if there's any questions.
So I can give you a brief overview of the planning commission meeting. There was a lengthy discussion, and I had suggested maybe that the applicant could shift the house slightly to the north, giving the southern, eliminating the southern variance on the one side, which still leaves 22 feet between the two new homes. And then the other thing I pointed out is if we approve, if we approve this one, the home that was shown in the packet is much smaller than the previous one. It's more reasonable, if you will, and that house would actually fit on the next lot as well with no side yard variances required. So it gives more fuel for us to say, no, you can't do a side yards variance on the next lot because you have a plan that could actually fit on that lot without side yard variances. However, having said that, the other thing I pointed out to the planning commission is that there were about four or five reasons we denied the side yard setbacks before, and with this smaller home and with the application in front of us, it really eliminates all of those concerns. It eliminates the fire hazard, the drainage, the size of the house, and so on. And so it's really hard to say, if we're going to deny this, what are the reasons you would come up with to deny it? Because, as you know, with a variance, you have to have a reason to deny it. And the planning commission discussed it and talked about it, and they felt that there really wasn't any good reasons to deny it. Questions? Any questions on the applicant?
No.
Okay. All right. Then I'm looking for a motion to approve the approved side yard setback variance at 3800 Enchanted Lane with the conditions as staff presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Vickery seconded that. Any further questions, comments? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes four oh, and you are approved. So, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I believe that concludes our business items, and we move on to staff reports. Are there any staff reports? Chief?
Madam Mayor and Council, I thought I would just mention that since the SRO issue came up earlier that last week, I think it was last Thursday before our head of the chiefs meeting--
it really eliminates all of those concerns. It eliminates the fire hazard, the drainage, the size of the house, and so on. And so it's really hard to say if we're going to deny this, what are the reasons you would come up with to deny it? Because, as you know, with a variance, you have to have a reason to deny it. And the Planning Commission discussed it and talked about it, and they felt that there really wasn't any good reasons to deny it. Questions? Any questions on the applicant? Okay. All right. Then I'm looking for a motion to approve the approved side yard setback variance at 3,800 Enchanted Lane with the conditions as staff presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Vickery seconded that. Any further questions, comments? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes for O, and you are approved. So, thank you. With that, I believe that concludes our business items, and we move on to staff reports. Are there any staff reports? Chief?
Madam Mayor and council, I thought I would just mention that since the SRO issue came up earlier that last week, I think it was last Thursday before our Annaphe Chiefs meeting, we did have a metro area Chiefs meeting regarding that specifically. There were a couple of legislators there as part of the meeting, and the conversation was a good one. There is some proposed language change that is already in motion to essentially reverse some of the concerns that we had and restore that position to what it should be. Essentially, in a nutshell, the educational committee somehow, in the educational portion of state statute, added language which ended up pertaining to SROs or police officers, which is, in my opinion, is like hiding the, you know, the manual for how to change your car tire in your refrigerator manual. Nobody would look there. It doesn't belong there. It's out of place. And it was absurd to begin with. And so it creates a set of standards for someone who's a police officer when they're an SRO, but a different set of standards for police officers working the road. So seriously, that wasn't what I believe their intention was initially, so, but it ended up that way. So there is, the good news is there's a fix in the works, and hopefully that will occur. We're told that they're going to meet very quickly after they resume and then address that. So hopefully, we'll have some good news for you shortly, because most of those schools that were, or cities that were present at that meeting have pulled their SROs all together. So these schools are going without SROs. And they, many of them had very compelling stories as to why that's not working. It's causing safety issues and concern after concern after concern. So we're hopeful that we can get that fixed quickly, and I'll let you know as soon as that happens.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other staff reports?
Probably just, or, and maybe you were going to mention, Mayor, just with the President's Day week, we'll have the council meeting Wednesday, the 21st. And then we have the strategic planning the next
The next day.
Day of Thursday, the 22nd at 12:30.
At 12:30.
Busy week after President's Day holiday, I guess.
Right. Right. Okay. So council reports, any?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
I attended the mound fire commission on January 25th. Jasper was there too. We discussed how the new E S S T policy is affecting the fire department. The fire chiefs are lobbying the legislature to remove the requirement for the volunteer fire departments to meet this requirement. As firemen, they already get 21 sign-out days a year that don't count against their percentage that they need to meet because it's unpaid because they're volunteers. But that way, it doesn't go against the percentage that they have to meet to still meet their pension requirements and everything. They have to implement this policy. It's going to cause issues with regard to tracking time off versus responding calls to meet their requirements for their response time for the on-call hours. So it's causing a headache, to say the least. 2023 calls from Minnetoka were 119. This is just for the mound fire, not St. Bonnie too, just mound area. Forty of them were fire, 70 were rescue, and nine were the duty officer calls, which equaled 683 fire hours, 1,010 rescue hours, and then nine duty officer hours. For reference, we had 44 fire in 2022, 59 rescue, and three duty. So that all went up. Good amount. Good news is the 2025 budget will likely go down overall because we added it to use the money to buy the stuff outright. So he's expecting an overall about $100,000 down, so it'll be good. The new radios that we approved, we're supposed to take six months. They got them in six weeks. So they've got them, which is great. Mutual aid for 2023, mound responded to 24 calls, and they needed aid on one. So not so balanced. The fire fund balance is $393,277. This is a lot higher than expected due to extra revenue of about $114,000 in interest, or plus interest. So they got extra money from the fundraisers and then interest on the account. Most of the discussion, again, was around calls that they are getting that don't actually require firemen. They're getting a lot of lift assists from a limited group of residents. The frequent flyers, we'll call them, don't live in Minnetoka, so that's good for us. But it's causing issues because officers don't want to respond at 3:00 in the morning for a frequent caller who doesn't actually need police assistance or fire assistance. So we spent a lot of time talking about it, and there's really not a great solution. I asked, what happens if they don't respond? And the answer was, they just always do. I also asked Chief, what happens if they don't respond? And he didn't have an answer beyond, they'll deal with it. So, which seems to be the problem, is that everyone knows someone will move this person who needs to be moved. The other item was Jasper and the other city administrators are going to be looking at the contract since it's 14 years old, just to see if anything needs to be changed, any new, anything that needs to be changed, basically. So they're going to look at, instead of having lawyers look at it first, because then if they don't think anything needs to be changed, there's no reason to spend money on lawyers looking at it. If they do find something, then we'll have mound's attorney start the process of making any changes. It fits since we're obviously redoing the one with St. Bonnie, so it makes sense to look at them. After the fire meeting, Jasper and I talked to Chief Falls briefly just about the shooting in Woodland Cove and discussed the circumstances surrounding it and block cameras, which I found bad about, which was good. And the other thing is Ann and I attended a virtual personnel committee meeting on the 26th to discuss the promotion of Officer Brown, the promotion of the sewer operator,
Operator.
Sewer operator, and interim pay for public works that we all voted on earlier. That's all I got.
Nothing from the water district.
Okay. Claudia, anything?
No, nothing.
So I will be attending the Northwest League on Wednesday, and then next Tuesday, I'll be attending the Park Commission meeting. And that's about it, I think. Again, thanks for the reminder. Next meeting is Wednesday, the 21st, and then 12:30 here for the strategic planning meeting on the 22nd. With that, we can be adjourned.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Vickery. All those in favor signify with aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes for O. Thank you.